Wow. Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 7, 2025, regular meeting of the Milton Select Board. I'm going to stop by calling our meeting to order. I want to go to agenda number two and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, item number three is public comment. Just to go over the guidelines, we don't have a big crowd here tonight. We don't have any crowd tonight. That's a good thing. Everyone's being smart, staying home when it's cold. We normally allow 21 minutes, three minutes per speaker. I don't see anyone online. We have no one here for public comment, and I see no one online for public comment. Going once, going twice, going three times. Thank you. We'll move right on to number four, discussion update, fiscal year 2026 budget and a five-year forecast and operational override possibility for fiscal year 2026, as well as the fiscal year 2026 capital budget. Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had distributed to this board some slides from our previous presentation in December. I'll just run through a couple of those just to reset some of the conversation related to that, and I'll just kind of head that off in terms of talking about the capital budget. We are meeting again on Thursday with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, so that work is underway, focusing Thursday on the Cunningham Project. So, we'll report back once the Capital Improvement Planning Committee has completed its work. So, that's the update on the capital budget. As it relates to the regular town budget, operating budget for fiscal '26, just as a reminder, as where things stand, our revenue forecast is pretty final at this point. We're estimating about $136 million in revenues. Some potential, excuse me, changes over the next month perhaps could be any revisions to new growth from new development and state aid, which we expect the state aid, the governor's budget to come out hopefully in a couple of weeks, which would then, we would reset our state aid forecast based on where that budget lands. I don't have any updates in terms of where the state budget sits at this point. Haven't caught up with the latest, but we usually don't make any changes until that governor's budget comes out, which we expect in a couple of weeks. And local aid numbers start to come out around the time of the Mass Municipal Association's annual meeting, which is in two weeks. So, I'll share any updates as I get those, but that's the revenue side, no changes since we last spoke. This is just a summary of where things stand presently between the schools, the shared costs, which are generally employee benefits and insurance and debt service, and then the town departmental operations over the last couple of years. This is, again, just for the level service asks, and we talked about this a little bit more in depth last time. Again, we have a bunch of shared costs that are, make up that shared cost category, and last time I spoke about the impact on health insurance in particular. We're looking at a significant increase in our health insurance budget due to how the fiscal '25 budget was put together, but also an increasing number of employees who are taking the town's health insurance plan. As you can tell here, we've had turnover since we set the budget based on where we expected employees to be versus where plans they actually are enrolled in. An increase of 17, a net increase of 17 folks have joined the town's health insurance plan over the last few months. And I'll just note that, you know, the town share of a family plan is upwards of $23,000 for a calendar year. So, as more people migrate to a town family plan, it can be quite expensive. So, the pressure that that comes on our budget is through higher enrollment, and then we're also experiencing increased claims. So, we have to be conservative, and our forecast is where we expect premium increases will be. This is one of the biggest accounts in our budget, so I wanted to highlight it, that we're facing budgetary pressure for claims and for the number of employees who are on the plans. Departmental budgets, we're just around a four and a half percent, slightly over four and a half percent increase for town department budgets for a level service budget. The budget submitted by the school department is a 9.4% increase, which includes their level service asks. We have requested and collected requests over and above a level service budget, which brings these requests a slightly higher. The schools have essentially two years of requests for additional needs, 1.4 million in year one and 820,000 in year two. Across all the town departments, there's about $2 million in requests for fiscal '26 across town departments. So, the bottom line of where things stand today, and we talked about that at our last meeting in December, is that we're about $9.5 million in the red with our budget forecast as things stand today with no use of free cash. And we have $4.5 million of free cash that was certified, that is available for appropriation. Of that $4.5 million, we would expect to use about a million for capital, as we've been doing the past couple of years, and I would like to try to continue that trend. We'd also want to look at putting money into stabilization because the budget is continuing to grow, and we want our stabilization reserves to grow alongside it. So, when there is a true economic downturn, the town has some reserves to lessen the impact of an economic downturn. Again, I shared this historical chart just showing the average single-family tax bill, highlighted the years in orange in the chart and red were the numbers that were override years. There has not been one since fiscal 2018. As we all know, the federal funding that came into play in the wake of the COVID pandemic has helped Milton and many other communities get through a couple of years without having an override. There was an operating override in 2010, as well as some debt service coming on that year and an override in 2007. And I just, I have a separate sheet that I shared in the packet about potential tax impacts of overrides. You know, we're in a good position because round numbers make math easy for the most part, so our levy is about $100 million. So, every million dollars that the tax levy on all the taxpayers goes up, it's about a 1% increase for the average single-family house. So, a $9.5 million override for the overrides portion would be about a 9.3% increase in the average tax bill. So, that's just one way to look at it, and I'll pull up that chart in a moment, but that gives you a sense of if today we were to move forward with a $9.5 million override to meet those level service asks as submitted, it would be about a 9.5% increase on those average houses for their tax bill. And I'll pull that chart up before everything goes crazy.
That was fun.
Sorry about that.
But am I correct in reading here that it's $1,435? That would be the?
The total in a given year, yes, because every year the tax bills are going to go up about 3%. So, that delta I'm talking about is over and above kind of the annual increase that's already baked in, right?
But the $1,435 is the total?
Correct. So, for a $9.5 million override, to use that figure, about another 1,063 increase on the average house would be part of, or as a result, a direct result of the override. And again, if you're slightly below the average house of about $1 million, your increase would be less than that. And as discussed, I distributed this chart in the packet, which shows just different figures. Every million dollar increase in the levy is about a $112 increase on the average single-family house. So, you go from a range, I just produced a ranges of between $5 million up to $10 million to give a sense of what that tax impact looks like. So, starting from about $600 for a $5 million override up to about $1,200 for a $10 million override to give that sense of scale. So, I think, you know, that's, those are the items I wanted to present on today. I think where staff and the schools are looking for some guidance is, is what number to start bill? Well, the first question is, are we moving forward with an override? And if yes, then what number are we targeting? Where things stand today, to meet those level service asks without reductions to whether the school department asks or town departmental asks, it needs to be that $9.5 million number. If folks can go back, sharpen their pencils and reduce their asks, that number can certainly come down. But on the town side, you know, we're not going up very much, so it would be tricky to do that on our side of the house, and I know it would be as well for the schools. So, that's the current state of affairs. Happy to take any questions or let you folks discuss.
Questions, comments? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Mr. Milano, can you speak a little bit about with these different scenarios, how many years you would anticipate this would last? Because as we know, we don't want to, you know, go out today and then next year come back out again. So, I think that's one thing, and also talk a little bit about, you know, you're talking about level service, what are the extras that people are looking for as well?
Sure. So, in terms of trying to make an override that's sustainable and can last a few years, I think the way that I'm looking at it anyway is we expect, if we go through the MSBA program on the calendar that we expect to go through that, the town will be asked to vote on a significant school project in the next two to three years. So, to expect to come back and ask for another operating override in two to three years seems a challenging proposition. So, it needs to be sustainable for, to get through the school project that we all expect is coming. So, you're looking at a five-year time horizon before I think we want to be back in front of voters. That's not an easy thing to do to build it that way, but to your point, it's more about controlling costs in future years. If we say it's a $9.5 million override, then that means town and schools, you know, that's, that expectation is if salaries and expenses grow, then things may need to be cut back in that five years to make that sustainable. So, to say, can we guarantee that if a figure is picked and we're going to be able to fund level service for the next five years because we do an override this year? I don't know if we can make that commitment, but we can try to live within our means as much as possible over the next five years once we move forward on something. And then in terms of departmental asks, I think it's a variety of asks that came from the town departments. You know, it's generally small, I shouldn't say small, it's generally asks for a little bit of additional help in offices. Council on Aging has a part-time employee who's funded by the state grant that this department receives, and they've asked to make that position full-time. The Health Department has a part-time public health nurse that's asked to make that position full-time. The Treasurer's Office has requested a position, have added hours to get to a full-time status to allow that staff to work to its, you know, full potential with the customer service demands that office faces. So, that's kind of the story across a lot of the departments, primarily personnel. I think in an ideal world, we would also be looking at investing in expenses for the Department of Public Works, who, you know, every year their costs for vehicle maintenance, for paving, for potholes, those costs don't stay the same. So, to catch back up to where we've seen some of those expenses go would be good. And then we budget snow and ice at $160,000 a year. So, you know, if we've had one storm, we're going to be heading towards that snow and ice deficit already. Many other communities budget much more, much higher amounts for snow and ice. So, to right-size that budget would be great to invest in that, but it's not cheap, which is the problem we face.
A follow-up?
Sure.
I just know with regards to snow and ice in the past, the reason they did not want to put too much in it in that budget was I, my understanding was you couldn't pull it out if it was dedicated to that. So, I think in the past, they've used free cash for that, at least when I was in warrant committee.
The last couple of years, we've been able to fund it within other appropriations.
Because it didn't snow.
But that's it.
Right, right, right.
And our costs, our costs are closer to over a half a million dollars, and we're budgeting $160,000. So, I agree, we don't want to raise it to a million.
Right.
But to reduce that pressure on our budget, we start July 1st. We know we're going to have a deficit in DPW when winter's over. So, to not live in that world anymore would be great, but it's not as appealing as adding staff in other departments, you know, in terms of what is a more exciting investment. But it's about building that sustainability.
Just one follow-up.
Final question?
Yep. Final question, Richard. So, the question I had was, people watching will understand, these, so if we're going for the higher number, is that adding positions or is that keeping what we actually have? So, I'm just trying to get a sense from, from the different scenarios, what's actually adding, which is actually leaving things the way they are? A breakdown of that.
As things stand today, the nine and a half million rough number that we're talking about here is satisfies departmental level service requests to keep things as they are today. On the town side, that's why we're at about a four and a half percent. The school ask is higher, closer to nine and a half percent. But that is across-the-board level, no additional positions included in those requests, and that's why we have those additional numbers from And that's why we have those additional numbers from both the school and the town departments that would fund over and above that budget. So as positions in the last few years were funded through federal grant money, absorbed into the operating budget, doing so knowing full well, it wasn't, there was no long-term solution there, now it's time to say, are we going to keep these positions? Are we going to go in another direction?
That was your final question? Just making sure, okay, for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was teasing you.
So was I. So just to be clear then, any of these override numbers that are less than nine and a half million would, it would be both a tax increase and a reduction in services for the town?
Yes.
In some way or the other? And then to the point that you were alluding to just a minute ago, and kind of following up on Ms. Musto's question, if with the nine and a half, if that went through, how, you know, if, how, how much growth potential is there for the school budgets in the next couple of years? I'm frankly just a little concerned that we've recruited a superintendent and, and asked him for his vision, and now we're not funding anything at all for the schools, we're just keeping them as-is. And, you know, we've lost a couple of, of great town hires already, and I would really be disappointed if we were turning into a place where people knew that they couldn't achieve what they wanted to achieve because we weren't following through on the promises that we'd made when, when hiring. So how, how much breathing room does that nine and a half give us for the next couple of years?
The, so it, so based on a current forecast, if assuming costs go up about 3% a year, where we would want to try to find a way to put money, some of that free cash away in stabilization to be able to draw down in future years, but there's no, there's, yeah, there's, there's no additional.
No.
Because that is the bare minimum. I think one thing that Braintree did, and I don't know whether Braintree got the right amount or not, but one thing they did include in their override was one and a half million dollars of the eight was dedicated to an override stabilization fund. Now that will grow 2.5% a year permanently, that will be used, that could be used to draw down from and support the investments or the saving of positions that they did with their override. But that's not anything like that, like a permanent contribution to stabilization, but that would have to be in addition to the numbers we're talking about today.
So that'd be like an 11?
Yeah.
And then there would be like 1.5?
Correct, in that scenario, yeah. Or, I mean.
Just as a, as an example.
Yes, exactly. And unless something entirely unexpected happens and Chapter 70 is announced at a million dollars higher than we expect, now that makes that conversation a little different, but I would not, I don't expect that. So it's, it's why we're.
We don't buy lottery tickets for the town.
Exactly.
We might have to start.
Ms. Bradley?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nick, can we go back to the FY '26 forecast you had up on your slides? I'm just, I want to try and figure something out here.
Which?
So it says here the needs-based request, so this is a needs-based request for FY '26, but then it says year one for the schools, and then it says year two for the schools. Is that year two for FY '27?
Yes.
Okay. And then the town is just 2 million total for FY '26?
Yes.
And that's needs?
Correct. What, the distinction between the two is the superintendent has worked to take what his team have brought to him and triage and prioritize, and that's what the 2 million over two years is. The 2 million in requests that we've received is our departmental asks, that doesn't reflect any prioritization by myself or this board.
But we could prior, you could prioritize some of those. I mean, I looked at it, and one department alone asked for $617,000. So obviously, that's, you know, like a fourth of this.
Correct.
More than a fourth.
Right.
So there's a way that we could work on the needs that were asked to put it in FY '27?
Right. And on the town side, I think you'll see the trend there, as I mentioned, you know, the Health Department's seeking to make a part-time position full-time. Now, it doesn't cost us $65,000, it might cost us $30,000. It may not be an additional benefit cost because that person may have already taken them or not. So it's like, there's examples like that, that there may be impactful investments that are not $100,000 in breaking the bank.
Right. So I got two more questions, then I'll be done. So the 9.5 is basically, I know Ms. Musto asked it, I know Mr. Zoll asked it, I, I just want to, I'm kind of a little bit confused about it still. So break this down into like sixth grade English for me, or math. If we do a 9.5 million dollar override?
If we tried, attempt, yeah, attempt.
Okay. If we, that would mean that there is only what is normally would be our increases. So the 3%, the whatever we get, so there's nothing else extra. So these needs that are on here are nonexistent. This would just possibly help us maintain a level service budget for FY '27, FY '20, possibly. We don't know, but possibly.
Yeah, right. The goal would be to maintain what we have today for the next five years, but not add anything beyond that unless something else changes in the revenue picture in the next five years.
So the $4 million of needs, this is going to be a part B of that question? So the $4 million of the needs is just, forget it?
Unfunded.
Completely.
And stays on a list that we look at and don't fund.
Okay. My final question is, can we take, I don't know if the 4.5 free cash for this year has already been earmarked, I'm assuming it probably might be, but is there a possibility that we could put that in specifically into the stabilization fund and flag that as something that can wait a year? We don't touch it for a year so it can gain interest? And then after that override, we can start using that money to help pay for some of these needs?
And increases the override, though?
No, it doesn't. Not if we take the 4.5% million, the $4.5 million that we currently have in free cash, you put it into a fund that you can't touch, it's a high-return fund, you can't touch it for one year, and that allows us to get an amount of interest that will be above and beyond whatever interest rates are, which is like what, 2% maybe? Do you see what I'm saying? So do you get it, Richard?
I'm thinking, but I think you have part of that designated to the operating budget already, right?
So that's, so the 4.5, so what do we have left from the 4.5?
No, so I think what I, what he's, I think he's trying to say, and what I, my answer would be is, we plan, we would like to plan to do that in order to support level service in the next couple of years. Because next year, if a contract that we expect this year to be a 2% increase actually is a 4% increase, we're going to need more money in next year's budget to, to figure that out. So that's why we would put money into stabilization, but to maintain what we're doing here, not to invest in additional asks. Because again, that's, that source of funding, although it'd be good and may, you know, money that's in our stabilization fund does accrue earnings and interest income, but it's not going to be a sustainable source to support additional personnel. We would propose, we would anticipate proposing to move some of that free cash into stabilization for that purpose, but to support and maintain and make sustainable whatever override we go, we choose to today.
So you're planning on using whatever we have left over from that free cash as part of this 9.5 number that we're talking about? No?
To support that in subsequent budget years.
But we, but you're afraid to put it in a lock fund for a year that would be a high return, high-yield return rate?
So if we put it into stabilization, it'll be in a fund that earns interest and accrues interest, but we're not going to invest it in Facebook, I guess.
No, 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 no. Put it in like a mutual fund, like there are, like you could do CDs, you could do all kinds of stuff with that money.
And that's, that's how our stabilization funds are managed.
Is currently working? Okay.
What's the return usually on?
Yeah.
I mean, last, I had a slide showing last year, we earned about a half a million on 5 million, I think.
Oh, that's it?
Are they?
Well, that's 10%.
Are they a part of this? Joanna and Amy?
If there are questions, yeah.
Do you want to come join us, kids?
I keep looking over there because our financials are sitting over there.
So I'm going to ask our town treasurer and our town accountant, Joanna McCarthy and Amy Dexter, to join us at the table. For any Q and A's that may come your way. Since you're out on this freezing cold night.
I know.
Whom brought, who brought them on this freezing? They couldn't all join by Zoom? You want to file grievances now?
Non-union.
Doesn't matter. This is America.
So if I could ask them?
You can do whatever you want.
Directly. If we, if we only do the 9.5, I'm trying to figure out exactly where that gets us in three years from now. Because what I'm looking at in three years from now, it's not going to get us very far. So I know we've got feedback going on. So I'm wondering from your, I mean, I know that the goal here, and the goal has been since I've been on the warrant committee forever ago, that, thank you, that we want to do a five-year plan. Like that has been the town's goal since probably when Richard was a baby. It's been a plan, right? So we've never.
Wow, personal.
We've never, we've never gotten there, to a five-year plan. So let's say we want to try to get to a three-year plan. Will this 9.5 million be enough to get us through three years? Or should we as a town think about trying to do, whether it be investing differently or trying to go for a little bit more to help, like what, I'm not a financial person, so what's y'all's opinion?
I, I mean, I think the honest answer is we don't know.
Okay.
So I, I think to reiterate what, what Nick has said, you know, expenses, like a particular contract, a particular expense could rise 4% year-over-year. That's more than a tax levy would give us, so we need to find that, those funds elsewhere. I think the prudent thing to do with free cash, because it's one-time funds, is put it somewhere where you can use it as one-time funds when appropriate, right? So, so I, I think the answer here is by keeping it in that rainy day fund, which is invested as well as.
We can.
We have been doing.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's been doing pretty well, yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, the, the market has been doing pretty well. If the market does not do pretty well, we can't guarantee those local receipts would be as high in out-years, right?
Okay.
So, so it's not, it's not a guarantee. And, and what, what we're talking about here is just maintaining level service.
Right, there's, right, there's nothing else.
Status quo. All those needs are not met and would not be on the radar to be met. Because I think we'd be first pulling from stabilization funds to fund that extra percentage on the contract, for instance, right?
Right, now I get it.
That's my opinion.
So they would sit on a list for however long? Because anything extra that we had would have to go in case there was, which, you know, we saw in Sped that one year, it went up 12%. So it, it could happen.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And I just pulled up for folks, so the stabilization fund had interest income of about $400,000 over the course of fiscal '24, and $5 million, that was in it. So thanks to the treasurer for.
It's a pretty good rate.
It's a pretty good rate, yeah, it's better than savings.
I'll take it. I love Scrabble.
Mr. Cohen?
Just to clarify Ms. Musto's question, there is additional staff, though, in this level-funded budget.
From fiscal '25 to fiscal '26, there would not be.
Fire Department, nothing, there's no added staff anywhere?
No, no.
Okay.
That would be, once we get into the needs, that's where we would be pulling from. We, we've been able to add a few positions in the last couple of years, but they're primarily federally funded, funded first. Two examples of which are, in the Health Department, there's now a community health social worker that was federally funded for year one, was absorbed into the general fund budget in year two. Down at the Police Department, there's a mental health clinician that was, we're still using federal funds, actually. And in the level service budget for '26 as proposed, I'm sorry, the current year's budget starts to absorb that into the general fund. And then next year would be the, the first year it's fully funded by us, but that, and that has been the case. Those are the two examples on the town side. Similar examples on the schools to a higher extent, but the same kind of idea where a year or two federally funded and then slowly absorbed into the general fund. That's where the new positions have come up over the past couple of years, but nothing incorporated in, in this budget today, other than what's existing today.
Mrs. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So now that we have our esteemed guests here, it's still a question for you, Mr. Milano, but I'd love to hear their opinion, too.
Love it, they guess.
So one thing that we had talked about previously is thinking about a position in town that would be funded, that could do things like look for municipal grants, look for funding sources for towns. So a position that you would, you would pay for, but that would pay for itself and then some ideally. As, as a fundraiser, I'm familiar with that kind of work. Have we, is, have we thought about budgeting in for a position like that? I know other towns have folks that have that mandate, whether it's a part-time position or a full-time position. I don't know. So I mentioned our guest, because I'm not sure if that, would that sit in your office? Would that sit in the treasurer's office? Or, or is there, you mentioned a treasurer position, is there a treasurer position that would result in more funding in for the town? Like, instead of looking, I, I mean, trying to look at it the other way, like are there other ways to increase revenue in over the next couple of years so that we have access to more funds?
I think that is typically a position that would be in like an administration office or an accounting office, and that would might sometimes in the accounting office be more of a grant manager, more, less than a grant writer. I think complicating that is, first, MBTA communities is just, that is the status quo right now, and there are a number of grant programs Milton's not eligible for, and we can't respond to a question like that without pointing that out, unfortunately. So that takes off the board for the near-term future, maybe not so long-term, but for now, that is a factor. I would also look at places where we would want to, if I'm prioritizing needs from an administration perspective, I think we need to invest first, and it's on the needs-based list, in human resources capabilities and functions in terms of, we have a, a single employee on the town side who handles HR, it's the HR director. We do have a payroll staff person in the treasurer's office, but there isn't that additional capacity to support employees through onboarding for professional development, for employee wellness and culture. It's a focus of the schools as well, as I know the superintendent's been talking about HR support at that side. And then improving and bringing the town further into the 21st century, we do a lot of pen and paper in terms of accruals, you know, folks, you can't tell folks today what they have for vacation time and sick time. It's 2024, we should, 2025, we should try to join that world. So there's things that we would like to invest in that I would prioritize over that. If MBTA communities was a non-factor, maybe that changes a little bit, but I think that's, that's one factor, and it's, we are, we're working to apply to a grant through MassSave for a energy manager. They're encouraging regional applications, so we're working to find a regional partner to apply for that. But that would be a grant-funded position, not meant to be a long-term position, but meant to help you go access grants specifically around energy efficiency for both the municipality as well as residents.
I, I don't know if you guys have anything to add to that?
I, I mean, I guess the other thing, Nick had mentioned this before, but, you know, I'm your treasurer and your collector, monies that, that are invested with, with the town that earn interest income or investment income ultimately end up as your, on, on your local receipts item. So it's in all of our collective best interest for that to be as high as possible. So focusing there and having the time and diligence to focus there is, is, would likely be of benefit to the, to that top line. I need capacity to do that. The, I mean, I guess the other thing that I would say is then from the collector, collector side of the house, any outstanding taxes that we have out there and we're actively trying to manage and collect on then come in under free cash. So, so we have to be diligent about that for, for lots of reasons, but, but I think that, that takes time and attention as well, so.
And then I'd just like to piggyback on Mr. Milano's comments about bringing us into the 25th current century. If we had some of these tools to automate some of these things, we'd realize some efficiencies in our manpower, and some of our manpower could then be redirected to do some of these other tasks. So I think it would be a win-win for the employees, they'd have things like their accrued PTO time on their pay stub, and we wouldn't be manually tracking this stuff. So we'd realize some efficiencies there. Not that would result in eliminating positions, but would then allow people that are doing these tasks to focus on other things that could help Joanne or I possibly do some of these other things like grants or.
Yeah, and I think just redirecting, redirecting resources is always a good opportunity to just ensure that we retain talent as well and continue to build and develop and grow. So I think all the, the town departments are looking to do that, as, as I know the schools. So, I think all the town departments are looking to do that, as I know the schools are too, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So, we're actively trying to manage that top number, yes.
Ms. Bradley.
First, kudos to whoever's doing pencil and paper to figure out vacation time for the entire town. That person, whoever that is, is a hero.
Hometown area.
Here's my question, and I guess, I don't even know who to direct it to, so it's free-for-all. Let's say we decide as a board that we want to do a 9.5
Try, right, try.
Okay.
It's going to be hard, I'm just telling you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm not saying that. I'm not, that's not what I'm worried about. I'm worried more about the long term. So, if we say that we're going to do a $9.5 million override, it goes through. But, as we know, and we saw last year, the governor's numbers and the final budget numbers, two totally different things. And we ended up getting a lot more finances by the end of the budget. Could we take that money, or some, whatever, I don't care where pilot comes from, could we take that money and put it in the stabilization fund? So, let's say we get an additional $2 million from the state. We weren't planning on it, so now we're down to 7.5. But we had already passed and approved a 9.5. Can we take that $2 million, put it in the stabilization fund for what may need to happen in a year for this needs list, or, I mean, like, is there a way that we can do this so that this needs list does not sit around for another decade?
That is, yes, if that were a scenario, there would be options to either appropriate into stabilization directly, or if it's unexpected revenues that are, or we are made aware of after the budget's been set, those revenues would come into the town and then close out to free cash within the year. But if it's part of state aid, then we know that's a recurring, most likely a recurring source of revenue going forward. So, in a subsequent year, it could be appropriate. It might mean a rosier revenue forecast going forward. So, the short answer is yes, the mechanics of it might be a little bit tricky.
Okay, that I understand. I just was curious, and is it, if we were to get better numbers from the state, and let's say it was only a differential of 7.5, would we change the override number if we were already locked into it?
It would depend on timing. Because that, and that's, our friends in the legislature take their time.
Yes, they do.
It's one of the newer members. So, you know, we'll have
They'll have a rock story.
The governor's budget will be January, the House budget will be April. We won't have a final budget until well after any override vote, because that will be in June, just because of the natural course of the process.
The Senate doesn't command a toll anyway.
Right, right, so it's after all of that. So, if it's state aid in that scenario, then that might be known after the fact.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
We good? Do I get a chance at? Go ahead.
Look ahead.
Go ahead, I'm, no, you know, may I always go left?
Mr. Milano, could you just bring up that chart again on the amounts and the dollar amount for people?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions on that.
Sure.
The ones, like, if you went for a $5 million, what the dollar amount is to people and, you know, to the residents? I want to see if it's different.
Good point, because it's very important. And I kept going, but I kept it to one page, so I stopped at 10.
Can you allege it, Eddie?
Yes.
I can look behind me.
Would, um
So, my question is, you have a dollar amount, it's based on a million-dollar home, so you haven't broken it down for $100,000. It's per million-dollar home, correct?
We have some $100,000 homes in this town. We're right
No, but sometimes it's easier for people to calculate. No, no, no.
Just to do the math. Just to do the math.
To do the math.
No, I know what you mean.
Because it's easier for people to calculate that, right? With their exact
Stay tuned, we'll publish the list at the end of tonight's meeting.
So, that's what I meant by that, so.
It'd be roughly about 10% of it, right?
It'll move, it'll move in a similar percent range. So, the percentage won't change, because we'll all, this is like a numbers exercise, so we're assuming nobody's value changes, we're assuming there's no new, there's no new growth in above what we're saying. So, all we're saying is, if the levy goes up by 10%, the average house, we expect to go up by 10%. In reality, we know some values will go up higher, some values will go up slower, so it's not going to equate to that. So, this is just a round number estimate. So, today, a $750,000 house, in your example, is about an $8,300 tax bill. So, if it goes up in the same range as, so, that'll go up, $8,300 a year, so that would go up 10% again, so that would be at about $830 for the $9 million example in this scenario. So, the percentages would be alike, it's just a matter of
The amount.
The amount would be different. And I can provide that, just because it's easier to look at it, but I always just use the average, because it's kind of, it's the number that the state puts out, and so anybody can find the same information if they went onto the state website and plugged some of the same numbers as us.
So, my, so my, Mr. Follow
Yeah, I'm following you. I want to, yep.
So, my follow-up question really is, so in year one, if you pass an override, whatever, you know, if it's the nine and a half, or whatever you pass, it's X number of dollars. The next year, I mean, do we have a five-year, you know, to show what the first five years of that will be for somebody, for instance? Because I guess my concern is, is that it's an awful lot of money, you know, and obviously we have the needs, but the question is, it's a lot of money, and then this is assuming that nobody's house value changes in five years or whatever.
It's going to change, it's going to keep going up.
It's going to keep going up. And then you already know that you have, when the assessors came in, they explained how much it would be normally per year increase.
Like a 3%, right?
Right. So, I would like to see, for instance, in some of this, a projection for five years, based on, without your house increasing in value, what that would be. But we know that the houses always increase in value, because it shows it here.
So, it'll be another, it'll be another 3% on top of this a year for that duration.
So, dollar amount? I mean, I want to see the hard numbers.
Yeah, no, we can prepare that.
You know, for people.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I think the residents should see what the numbers are, because those are dollars, you know?
And to be clear, just to kind of take that point home, it's, the nine and a half million dollar override, that is now a permanent increase in our taxing capacity. So, it stays on in perpetuity until it's ever reduced, but, so, just to, yes, everybody's tax bill would go up by that amount in year one, and then that'll be the new floor, and now you should expect it to increase each year thereafter by the same percent as the tax bills normally go up
Right.
Year-over-year.
Can I follow up on Ms. Musto? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, you're good. Why? Go ahead.
On the, you're good?
Yep.
Okay. So, on the very bottom here, it says every $1 million increase in the tax levy is approximately 112 increase to the average single-family home.
Dollars.
Yeah. I'm assuming, what are we basing an average single-family home on, just out of curiosity?
It's a million
A million dollars. Oh, good, I'm under that. Okay, so, just a little. So, I just did some math, and what this actually breaks down to a month in a year is an $88 increase to your tax bill every month. So, it's not, so when we look at these numbers and we start breaking it down, most people hover around the $1 million mark for the value of their home, right? Whatever our home is worth is always more than what it's assessed at. That's just the way real estate works. Thank you for that, whoever. But, so if we think about this and we break it down to $88 a month, that's not
Just for this.
Per million.
Per million, just for this, just for this.
Right, but there's not that many people that have an over-million-dollar home.
No, per million of override.
No, no.
No, 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 no.
Million-dollar house.
No, if it's
$88
Yeah, you added all the
The 9.5 million?
Yes, yes.
Right, because she's taking the nine and a half million dollar scenario for the average house, which is about 1,060 divided by 12, which is about the 90 bucks.
88.6 is what it is. So, I, that's how I did the math. But not many people have an over-million-dollar home. I mean, there's definitely not just a handful in town, but, you know, most of our houses are assessed at a lower value than what they would sell for, right? Everybody knows that. So, our assessed value right now, I would say most average homes probably hover at around a million dollars when you average everything out. That's $88 a month. So, when you think of it that way, it's not like it's the end of the world. Is it going to be a strain? Yes. But the way I always look at this, and the way I always have approached the dollars when it comes to impact on our neighbors, is I look at whether or not I can do it. I'm a single mother, I make less than six figures a year, I have a kid in college, thank God, just did her last payment, but can I afford $88 a month? Probably, I could stop buying Starbucks all the time, but, you know, there is a way to do it. So, when you break it down and you start thinking about it, in general, to what we would have to give up if we didn't go for this amount, it's really staggering to me. So, I just wanted to try and be a little bit more on the ground, what this looks like for the average homeowner. And, like I said, I make less than six figures, I have a house that's probably assessed around a million. Can I make $88 work? Yes. Is it going to be a stretch for me? Yeah, it honestly is. But I can make it work, because I want to make sure that we continue to have at least the same level of services that we currently have. So, that's my two cents.
Quit smoking.
I don't smoke.
Say you smoke.
No, 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 I do not.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice? So, we got a little bit of homework here. So, the largest overrides, you were here in 2018, weren't you, Amy? Yeah, 2018, you were here. So, I'm sitting here tonight and looking at the room, and I'm looking for faces like Sheila Verella, Jeff Krickshanks, Betty White, Joe McGetrick, John Cronin, Leroy, people who've been on the front lines of so many overrides here over the past. Only reasons overrides have succeeded in this town, since the first one, I think, in 1985 or '86, is because we usually seek overrides when the overall quality of life or impact on the quality of life across the board. It can't just be schools, it can't be police, it can't just be fire, it can't be the libraries or town hall. It has to affect everyone. A nine and a half million dollar override is unprecedented. It's 5.7 million more than we've ever achieved in the entire, in 19, in 2018, it was going to be 5.4 million, and we cut it back to 3.8 million, because they want to pick a number. Mr. Milano talks about Braintree. Braintree was at 16.5, and wound up selling on an $8 million override, because it was the only thing they thought they could. So, I know for a paper exercise, here, we talk about 9.7 million, like, it's an easy thing to do, it's very difficult, very, very difficult. I'm, like, you and I talked, we went through different exercises the other day, Nick and I, just like, what would five get you? Because I was trying to keep it something close to where we've been, because 2018 to 20, it's 27 years. It's not like we just, and we've always been, if you go 2018 to 2000, we've never had a jump of this significance in the history since we started having overrides almost 30 years ago. So, the last thing in every override meeting I've ever been to, the last thing that every person that I just mentioned tonight ever talked about was, if you're going to have an override, you don't want to lose. Because if you lose, the hill you've described, the painting that I'm describing tonight becomes that much more steep, because the impact on your finances, your future, your bond rating, all of that comes into play. Even in when we did the interviews for the MSBA on the site visit, the history of overrides was brought up and was, we painted that picture for them. So, we don't have to make this decision tonight, but I do want to say at nine, I know that we're doing a paper exercise, and to Ms. Bradley's point, that $88 amount, there are people in this town who will not be able to pay it. And I'll describe to you a scenario that I watched two weeks ago at my brother's keeper. Two days before Christmas Eve, I walked into the loading dock on this one morning, and the way the keeper delivers is, at Christmas, particularly at the holidays, is everything's in trash bags, so that when you pull up, the trucks are unmarked, when you pull up to a house, no one really knows what's coming to the house, it's all inside, whether it's food, whatever it is, it's in a 55-gallon trash bag. But on that morning, I walked in, and the entire loading dock, one whole bay, was completely covered. And I heard the dock foreman, the crew doing, the two crews were doing the deliveries, I did not know them, but I heard that, he started reading out where they were going, and the entire load, which would have been well over 25 homes coming to this town. And that's something we need to be cognizant of, and so, while we don't have to say tonight, ideally, I'd love to say, okay, we need 9.7, let's just go do it. That's a big friggin' hill to climb. It's not a hill, that's a mountain. And it will require all the departments, I mean, it will require across-the-board support, police, fire, library, schools, everyone. Can't just come in here like we saw a few months ago, come in beating a drum and say, let's vote, uh-uh. And if you look at historically, the overrides that have passed here, all those years, the margin is very small, very small margin. Like, you don't, you don't win an override by 1,000 votes, you win it by 200, like, very, so, we have to think about that, and I've already said this, Nick knows where I'm at, and I, Ms. Bradley mentioned how long I've been here. That's the reality of what we're facing. And not to say that it isn't real, but into what, some of the, many of the questions you asked, because I think I started at five, I think I said with you, and I think you said to me, if we went for a $5 million override, you'd have to go again in two years. And to those who suggest you could do an override every two years, absolutely false, that's why we're seven years old now. To Ms. Bradley's point about a $2 million windfall from the state, I'm looking. I'm looking, if it's there, I promise to snap it out of the air. So, I think, you know, we really need to, the one thing you did say, Nick, that I did like, that Braintree did do, and that's really for you guys, the leadership team, to figure out. You know, if we did go for an amount near 9 million, to take a percent, to try and find a way to take a percentage of that and invest it towards, because we already know, looking down the road, we're going to be here in '27, looking for a significant debt exclusion override. Even though we were fortunate to get into MSBA, we are still going to have to fund our percentage of that. So, that's another, go back to the, so the 88 really compounds in this, and, well, I probably won't be at this table then, when that happens, but for the future of the town, the one thing that I can say to people out there is, the residents who live here now, whether they've lived here for a week, or they lived here in 1986 or '07, where we had the first one, the one thing the overrides have done for this community is they've maintained a quality of life that you expect, whether it's the school system, the new schools, whether it's your dial 901, whether you come in and use this building, whether you're going to use the library, whether it's town hall hours, whatever it is, it's maintained that. And so, that's really all I'm going to say about this, but we need to really think about the reality of what can, what will the community tolerate, and what can we as a community, because we as elected officials, we have to form a PAC, every override we've ever had is, we've had a political action committee, we have to have a PAC that's diverse, and I don't mean diverse just in thinking, that's diverse, that has representation for all the aspects of this town, that can go out and convince someone that that $88 is really a difference between, you know, can I buy dinner today or can I not? Really, really important thing, so, that's all, we're not going, we need to think about it, it's really, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I just have a quick question for you, Mr. Chair, actually? So, you know, admittedly, I was not on this board, I have voted for overrides in Milton in the past, not
As a voter.
As a voter. So, when you talk about scaling back previous override dollar amounts, my understanding is, at this point, if we scaled back the dollar amount, we would be cutting services.
So, that's how overrides, so if you go back, and here's a little test thing you could all go back and do tonight, if you go back to '28, to Google the overrides in Milton, it will kind of paint a picture of what the voters were facing. In every override that I have ever seen in this town, you are saving, you know, X amount of teachers, X amount of police officers, you know, town hall hours, you know, the mental health, that's what
Right.
As one longtime resident, who's been very involved in this town for many years, described it to me, and I heard it many, described it as, you are protecting the food, you know, the essentials that are on your plate, the meat, and it could be, you know, the meat, the potatoes, and the vegetables.
Could be a soy meat.
Whatever. There's no extra.
Yes.
There's no dessert, there's no, you're not, there's no à la carte to come in, in a, you can, residents are smart, they're never going to vote an override to give you more than you have today.
But would they vote for an override that they would end up with less than they had before the override? I guess that's my question, because-
Google and do some research. Overrides are to protect services and I've never seen an override yet where, that's why Braintree, if Braintree had gone for 16, but they had a, they had no history of overrides, and they have a much bigger commercial base than we do, and they came up with a number of 8.5 is what they thought the residents could tolerate, and that's what they went for. And there was, as the chief there and I are very close, and at the time, the mayor's chief, they were, they were holding their breath because they weren't sure whether or not they could achieve it. So that's, and I don't mean to say it in, believe me, I'm just one person and I, I sit here today with the privilege of the history of being here in the past and just seeing how hard, I can remember, I never really knew Jeff Krickshanks, who chaired the wild committee, chaired the school committee for a long time, I never knew him that well. He wound up chairing, I think, the 2009 override. And I can remember how hard it was, and I can remember coming out of my house the day after, when he was sitting in my driveway with a bottle of wine, with this big grin, because the two of us, the day before, were so worried on the day before the vote. The residents that came out and worked and that override worked so hard for so long to get to that goal, and it's just, it's, it's, it's harder than a political election. It really is, it's very, very hard.
When do we, when do we have to decide?
Go ahead and, so I already, I was going to say that, so good question, but it's not tonight.
No, it's not tonight, but I'm just curious.
If Carol's watching tonight, I told her, I said, we're not deciding tonight, so.
Ideally, by the end of this month, whether that takes the select board meeting twice to do that, or it's the first week of February, I think that would be the last-
The drop date.
Yeah, and so if there's information you need, information you're looking for myself or from the school department, please let me know. If there's anything that you need to help make your decision. The other thing just to think about would be timing of the ballot question vote. Typically in Milton, they've occurred after the town meeting.
Yeah, not on the town election.
It doesn't need to happen on the town election, certainly can, and it is no longer as cheap as it once was to run a town election with all the vote by mail. The special election for MBTA communities was over fifty-five thousand, so if there's an interest in avoiding that cost, the ballot question could be on the annual town election. But again, that, the rhythm is typically town meeting and then ballot question vote, but Belmont, I think last year, did it in that sequence of election first, then town meeting, so.
Is there a state primary vote in?
No, that's presidential.
None of that.
So it's basically until, not until after town, you'd have to have a special election.
Yeah, the next election is-
There wouldn't be one in November either.
There's just two town elections, so the next two elections, I think.
The next, so then-
April of '25.
We've got April, we've got April and then-
Do you have one? Then you, do you have a, well, historically, I think we've done it by itself, I think.
Correct, that's, that's the case, yeah.
Yeah, we've always done it by, I mean, since I've been here.
So if it's okay with the members, and I think it would probably behoove us to help us in our decision, whatever number we come up with, is probably the next meeting. Limit it, let's bring, we want it limited to like 10 minutes each on the town side, whatever department head you want to bring, whether it's Chief King, Chief Madden, Arena, maybe the library, Christine, on the town side to kind of paint the picture of the importance there, and also Dr. Burrows and his team to kind of paint that picture. Because I think, you know, we're talking, you know, we're showing spreadsheets and numbers going back, and I don't, I'm not an expert in this, but I think the human aspect of it is critical. I think there are the people that are, I think people need to hear it. So if we can schedule that, maybe we can do the whole thing within like 45 minutes and do that at our next meeting. Is that okay?
That works.
Okay. You okay, kids? You want to go home? I call you kids because you're, Timmy, you're a friggin' old man. First off, no. So any further questions for our esteemed, for our esteemed financial leadership team?
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you both for coming out on this freezing cold night. If I had a bottle of wine, I'd give it to you both, you can go. I don't have one. But, and thank you for everything you do, you know, on behalf of all of us and everyone who's involved in this town. It's not easy what you do to make the X's and O's match and work and pay the bills, so thank you for that, thank you for all your, and your staffs as well. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, right, we, item number five, discussion approval update, special town meeting, February 24, 25AA, special town meeting articles. If you need to talk for us, let me just go, you, you, if you want me to go summarize- You're fine, you can do, yeah, go ahead, I'll let you summarize and then we'll go. Oh yeah, so I'm, I meant to, can I have a motion to reopen the, good point, very good. I had wrote myself a note too. I wrote myself a note. Can I have a motion to open the warrant?
I'll make up motion.
A second.
Second by Ms. Musto, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's no roll call, I'll tell you, okay. The, we are now open, okay, so Mr. Milano, thank you, thank you.
So Roman numeral one is the appropriation for feasibility study with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This warrant article was voted upon by the School Building Committee, subject to Town Council and the MSBA's form of vote and form of article. This article that was in the packet reflects the MSBA's vote criteria. They are very much sticklers for vote language and warrant article language, so we took their draft, submitted the project scope for Milton, the project school, which is the Cunningham School, which is the school we submitted for the statement of interest for, and the location, and then otherwise tracked exactly to the MSBA's vote language. The School Building Committee's recommendation is $1.5 million for this feasibility study. Looking at some recent middle school projects, their feasibility studies ran in the range of 1.2 to 1.3, so it seems an appropriate amount to request. And just as a reminder, all feasibility study expenses are reimbursable, so the town will get reimbursed for 45%-ish of its expenses in the feasibility study, so we'll never need to spend the full 1.5 million. However, the town meeting does-
Can you give the remainder to Ms. Musto, I mean, to Ms. Bradley to put, Ms. Musto to put towards the operating budget?
So we need to appropriate it, but we won't necessarily ever spend 1.5 million of town funds on this. And the proposal is to have it be borrowing since if a project is approved, it can be rolled into that project. So anyway, it tracks with the MSBA vote language, it's $1.5 million, it's recommended by the School Building Committee. This vote language has been reviewed by the MSBA, so they're comfortable with this language. Any changes or amendments to the language or to the, even to the motion at town meeting would need MSBA's sign off before it takes place. So that's the first one. Any, do you want me to go one by one?
Do you want to vote on them?
No, let's do the first one for us, Mr. Cohane. They'll all vote, they'll all vote one by one, okay.
I've done a lot of, I've done a lot of homework this, the MSBA site is great. And my understanding is that it's not until the end of this eligibility phase that we need to have this.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to take, take a breath, that's all, you know? And I did also look at other, other schools, and I don't want to change us right out of the gate, but I did, again, the site is great. And that, you know, the feasibility study ranges from 750 to, there were two of them, Norwood and one other one that were close to our size that were the 1.5, and then you had Brookline that was 2 million or something like that, but it was a huge project. So this, it's, it's on the higher end, this 1.5 in this time of watching money. And yes, we will get it back as long as we make it to the next phases. We don't make it to the next phases, this money's expended and we don't get it back.
No, we'll get reimbursed for any expenses that-
Whether we make it beyond or not.
If it's a failed vote, they'll reimburse us for the feasibility study and say, thank you, see you later.
See you later.
We'll get the reimbursement, but that, we won't get anything more after that.
Okay, okay.
That was, that was clearly outlined in the award, in the award meeting, that you'll get your feasibility money, but nothing else.
Okay, okay. And again, because I read things, you read things after the fact and you read things differently. And in, in here, and I know this is their language, so I believe it is their assumption that when they say, under the direction of the School Building Committee, they mean the School Building Committee formulated for this.
They just mean, in, in that case, it's, so kind of take it step by step first. The, under the direction of is up to how the town wants it to be spent. And for the fire station projects, for example, it's under the direction of the Fire Station Building Committee. So in this case, the, we, we kept their language, the School Building Committee. And in Milton's case, we have a School Building Committee. So all where this appropriation is authorizing Milton's School Building Committee to expend the funds.
That needs to be clarified, because in their, in their website, it talks about permanent building committees and school building committees and how that has to, also, this committee has to be formed and some of the members can come from that. So I just, I think that needs to be clarified, because I think-
Did they already sign off on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I, I need to clarify it then, you know?
No, I get what you're saying, but I think-
I know, I know.
So it's an appro, while it has to comply with the MSBA requirements, it's still an appropriation vote and it's a local action.
Correct.
So we could put in there, under the direction of the select board, and that would be fine, and it wouldn't, it would not have to comply, well, right, but, so it wouldn't have to meet any other requirements. As long as Milton has a School Building Committee and Milton's town meeting is authorizing that said School Building Committee to spend these funds, then that's all, that has to happen. In order to participate with the MSBA, we need our School Building Committee to meet the MSBA's requirements, but that doesn't affect this appropriation here.
Are you looking for an amendment to the, are you looking for an amendment to the article? Like amend, amend in the language somewhat?
I just, I just, I know this is theirs, but everything is from a frame of mind, and from their frame of mind, they're talking about their School Building Committee.
Well, let's play out a scenario that wouldn't happen, just to explain what this appropriation would mean. So let's say town meeting votes this, something crazy happens, February 25th, we get a letter from the MSBA, so hey, thanks, but actually we're kicking you out of the program. This appropriation would still be an illegal appropriation, the Milton School Building Committee would still be authorized to expend it because it's a local appropriation and a local vote taken by the Milton Town Meeting. The School Building Committee, in order to participate with the MSBA, needs to meet certain requirements, but if the town meeting votes to authorize the School Building Committee to spend funds, it means whatever School Building Committee is in existence in Milton, whether it's amended subsequently or not. It's just identifying a board or committee that currently exists in Milton today to expend these funds.
Do you want it to be, are you suggesting it should be someone else other than the School Building Committee?
No, no, I'm suggesting that it should state specifically, under the direction of the School Building Committee approved by MSBA.
But they don't technically, I, I hear what you're saying, they don't technically approve the MSBA, the, the School Building Committee, because they wouldn't say, hey, that person can't be on it. They just say, this meets the state's regulations.
They do actually approve the School Building Committee. As part of that process, there's a form, we have to fill out.
The members meet the regulations, correct?
Right, and it becomes the School Building Committee.
So long as we've submitted a School Building Committee that's in compliance, though, they wouldn't return it down, so as long as we don't-
No, but in the end, they have to approve it and it becomes the School Building Committee in their eyes.
But the town currently has a School Building Committee that was appointed by the moderator.
Right, it's not our appointment.
It's not even ours. It's the moderator.
Good question.
You raise your hand.
Yes, but I have to finish.
I just, also, can I just point out, just a parliamentary procedural item here, what we're talking about and we can, is the motion that would be before the town meeting, that is typically the warrant committee's recommendation. It doesn't need to be decided today in this room. What this board is asked to accept is just the article language.
Right.
And so if there are questions about the recommendation and how to structure that recommendation and work with MSBA to make a couple of tweaks to that recommendation, if that's the will of this board, then that can be done anytime between now and February 24th.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted, just in terms of timeline and expectations.
No, 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 it can be done, no, I agree, I agree. But there is a form, I mean, there's a School Building Committee form, you fill out and this becomes the School Building Committee from MSBA.
But that's not for us to fill out.
Yeah, it is.
The select board?
No, 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 the town, no, the town.
I get that, I get that.
The town, the town.
So I just, I just want to, go, do you have a question for us?
I do.
Because I don't have a question, I have a statement, so go ahead, go ahead with your question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to Mr. Cohane's point, I guess it sounds like maybe what you're thinking of, just listening here, is that maybe what you're thinking of under the direction of the MSBA-formed School Building Committee or something like that. I think the thought, from what I'm hearing right now, seems like a good point because, two things I wanted to ask. I know you said that we would definitely get reimbursed, for instance, on the money, correct?
For eligible expenses under the feasibility study.
Okay, that's, what if we don't make it to the next round?
It doesn't matter.
So right now, we-
She, he asked that.
That doesn't matter.
Excuse me, that's the question.
Right, but that's, we've already answered this.
I'm just trying to confirm something.
Go ahead, go ahead. All right, go ahead.
What's the look for?
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
The look is for the fact, Roxanne, that we just had this question.
I'm trying to clarify something.
Please, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify that point, that it will, it will get reimbursed.
Eligible expenses under the feasibility study would be reimbursed.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the question I have too about this is, the way that it's written, it sounds like from what you just told us, that if something happened tomorrow, that the funds could still be expended by the current school committee?
School Building Committee.
School Building Committee, I'm sorry, yes, for feasibility.
This is a legal appropriation, so if the expenses were a legal expenditure under this appropriation, then yes.
Then they could.
But the intention is obviously clear with the language that it's done, so for the grants for the MSBA.
It's also-
Because it's specifically around the elementary or middle school project for the Cunningham School.
Go ahead, let her finish.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, go ahead, no, it's all right, go ahead.
Feasibility, could you explain what is included for people that are watching in a feasibility study?
Yes, the feasibility study is, so there are three reports that the town will have to complete as part of the feasibility study phase, a preliminary design program, which is like the initial first draft of all the options that the town wants to consider, preferred schematic report, which further analyzes all the options that the town studies and then identifies its preferred solution to, for the school project. And then the schematic design report is the third and final submittal under a feasibility study, and that is the design of the school to a schematic design level with cost estimates. That report, that design, that cost estimate is what goes to the voters for their vote. So that's, and included in all that would be, you know, wetland delineation and flagging, site studies, traffic studies, geotechnical reports. It's, it's all that initial investigatory process that helps the architects design the building and design all the infrastructure related, so you can get an accurate cost estimate.
And as a follow-up, so this really can't start before May 1st, correct?
Uh, well, the appropriation is actually for, so the first phase are now, this is, sorry for the bureaucratic process that the MSBA does.
I was going to go through it too, but you can't.
And so we are in eligibility period, we're not spending any money. We are just doing, we're getting the appropriation, we're forming the School Building Committee, we're doing homework with MSBA, we're settling on the parameters of what we will study for grade configuration, we're agreeing on how many students would be in said school designs. Then we go into feasibility study. The first step in feasibility study is to procure an owner's project manager, still not spent any money. The second step is to procure a designer, our OPM would help us with that, that's when the first cost would start, is going through design and procurement to get that out the door. We get an architect on board, then we start studying. So the $1.5 million has to be appropriated before the end of eligibility period, but no dollars would be spent on it until after the first step of the feasibility study, if that makes sense at all. Very clear.
So, yes, and just to clarify one more thing, in terms of dates, what are we talking for these phases?
I think eligibility period is expected to go till November, I think it's 200, no, longer than that, right, into next year.
I looked up other times.
I don't know the exact dates.
November's the best case.
Yeah, November, end of, end of the calendar year where we start owner's project manager procurement. And so I probably, I would not expect to see any funds spent out of this appropriation until the calendar year '26, at the earliest really, yeah, calendar, early calendar year '26.
Yeah, first quarter, end of first quarter or something, right?
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
So to that, then, another thing I would like to add is, because there's no, again, no reason not to, but we don't want to spend the money if we don't know we're going forward[1707.20] no reason not to, but we don't want to spend the money if we don't know we're going forward and I know we'll get half of it, but we won't spend any of it until we are invited into the feasibility study phase by the MSBA board. That's the module three. And so I'd like to have added here, and I guess we can do that between now and the next time, just language that says that no funds are expended until we're invited into the feasibility study.
It's a procedural question.
I don't think we'll let it through that.
So that is really, it depends on what the warrant committees, the recommendation language here in bold, that's the warrant committees typically. Now, they.
This draft motion is from the warrant?
The draft motion is what the warrant committee will recommend, because in the warrant, if you picture the warrant, it's the article. The article is what was submitted by the school building committee, and that's what this board is approving to be included in the warrant. Then in the warrant report, the warrant.
So basically, then I'm saying I'm not approving it because I want these changes. Is that the bottom line for me?
Well, it's not really what we're asking you, whether you approve or disapprove right now. The only question that this board is being asked today is do we want this article in the warrant or not?
Oh, okay.
Because the school building committee wants this language, and so.
Which has been approved.
Which has been approved.
By the MSBA.
Right.
By MSBA.
Have to go back to the MSBA.
So if the members of the warrant committee agree with you, maybe they'll work that into their recommendation. We'll have to see if the MSBA approves it. Alternatively, this board could make a motion at town meeting, say, the warrant committee recommendation is X, we suggest Y. And so there's a couple of different avenues. It's not now before it goes into the warrant.
Like many of these things, it's very rare. I mean, it happens, but a lot of times there is a change or a warrant committee.
Between now and.
Between now and town meeting.
And just to be clear, it sounds like both of you would rather this be expended by the new school, school building committee. That's what I'm gathering, that you guys don't like the setup of what is currently, because both of you have raised the same thing, so I just want to make sure.
My, my understanding is they are very rigid, MSBA.
They are.
They are.
But that's why we're reading to that language.
I agree, but different people that are reading it from, writing it from different angles, when they say school building committee, they may mean the school building committee that was formed by them. I'm just saying, we should clarify it.
But if the MSB is what you're worried about, right, and they approve this language, can you walk me through your thinking on why they wouldn't approve it if they just approved it? Why they would interpret it any differently than what they just approved?
We're the ones misinterpreting it, not them.
I'm not misinterpreting it.
What do we misinterpret?
What are we misinterpreting?
You're interpreting this to be the school building committee as formed right now.
No, I'm interpreting it to be whenever we go to spend the money, whatever school building committee is around.
Yeah, because it's not going to be spent.
Because it's not going to be spent for a while.
Until for months.
So the existing school building committee, the one that you sit on right now.
Yeah.
Can do nothing with this.
Right.
Nothing. If you wanted to have a meeting, a call meeting tomorrow and try and do something with this, you could do nothing with it.
As long as that's clear.
Nothing.
So if it's not clear.
All right, hold on, hold on, let's keep things in order here, let's hold on, hold on.
I'm raising my hand.
I know, I know. You're alive.
A minute ago, Nick said that this is not the school committee formed by the MSBA.
I think what, it sounds like what.
No, but there's no money, there's no, there's no money, there's no money, there's no.
February 25th, there will be, and I think what, if I'm interpreting what you're looking for perhaps is something like provided that no funds will be expended until the town enters feasibility study, or something like that, that says.
Can you write that down? So why don't you do me a favor? Why don't you write that down?
Funds will not be expended until the town is formally invited into the feasibility stage by the MSBA board.
Hold on one sec.
Sorry.
I'm gonna have him ask them. All right, that okay with you?
What's that?
I'm going to have Nick, and I'll come back to you. I'm gonna have Nick run this by them. Is that all right with you?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I think, you know, to assume what I'm thinking or why I said what I said, I, when I look at that and after, you know, Mr. Milano's comments, I just want to ensure that when you have a new committee, that you'd want the new committee, which is the old committee, and additional members, if we get to the feasibility, that's who should be doing it. And that's my point.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying. But as to Mr. Milano's point, if for some reason we got kicked out at some point.
Right.
We don't have that other committee, it would go to the original committee, and that, that's what I'm saying.
No, no.
No, and that's what I think the mix-up is.
No, you said the original committee exists.
Well, there's a current committee, but once it gets changed, then it's.
But they can't spend the money.
That's February 25th, the day after town meeting.
But you had mentioned something.
I was using an example, and I feel like I've confused folks more than I meant to.
Yes, thank you.
So what I did is I.
They can't spend it.
I plugged in this, that language I suggested, that if the warrant committee accepts it, could in theory be included, which just says that the town will appropriate the money at the special town meeting, however, funds can't be spent from it until after the town and MSBA execute a feasibility study agreement.
Can I ask a question? Can we all live with that?
That sounds fine.
Can we all live with that?
Yeah.
Can you live with that?
Yeah.
My question is.
All right, go ahead, what's your question?
I actually just have a question for Mr. Cohen. This was submitted by the school building committee, right? So were you, did you participate?
We haven't met.
Did you participate and vote on this?
I haven't been, they didn't give me these.
No.
Okay, so how did this come to us? If the school building committee didn't vote on the language?
I don't think they did.
They voted without like actually having the document. I've been, I've been asking for it.
Okay, I was just, that was just a process question, that's all I had.
Yeah.
So, final, so I just, summary and then, so we okay with him adding that?
Yeah.
Yeah, good, okay.
If MSB is.
If MSB is, if MSB is. And I just want to get in, and I just want to reiterate how hard this was. There are many people, and let's go back to, it was not, it was a lot warmer, not too many months ago, that people were banging on it, 190. Listen, this was hard. Forty-seven communities applied this year, only 22 were selected. We are one of the 22. This is a huge benefit for the town. Everything that I've seen from them, just on my short time so far, in this new role, they've been awesome. So this is a real gift to, I, I think you said, no one, I mean, I, including me, and like, I'm, so.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we also don't want to make them upset.
I'm with you, I don't like, because that's, one of the things that they, one of the things that they look for, one of the things, and you and I've talked about this, and you came from there, one of the things that they clearly look for is local support. They don't want to see you, they don't want to welcome you into this program and go through all the exercise all the time and make the financial commitment to have you vote no.
Right.
You know, they don't want that, to see it fail, they don't, go ahead.
So to that point, Mr. Chair, this, this language has already been approved by MSBA. I worry a bit that we're, if we're already sort of tweaking language about how do we spend $1.5 million in a way that it's obvious that it can't be spent this way otherwise?
I'm not tweaking language, I'm just letting him, I'm okay in letting him ask the question. That's, I'm okay with the question.
Because I honestly don't know that that's, like, I think the school building committee has done a fantastic job to get us to this point, and if it starts to look like we're gonna start nitpicking individual amendments.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
It's not gonna look great, so I would actually not be in favor of changing the language. I think it's okay to ask maybe the clarification question.
I'm okay with that, too.
But I wouldn't change the language. And then if you come back and you say, the clarification is that they could actually spend the money on, you know, March 1st, you know, then we can decide whether we want to change the language around, but they can't.
They can't.
So the answer comes back that they can't do it until the time which you said that they've already told us that they can't spend it to, I think it would behoove us to take the language that has already been approved by MSBA, let's look like a nice, happy, unified town here and, and use the language that we've already agreed to and the school building committee's already given us.
Mr. Chair.
Just my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
I get that, I get that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve little i, the appropriation for a feasibility study with the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the special town meeting warrant dated February 24th, 2025.
As amended or not as amended?
Not as amended.
I second.
Just a procedural point, the article itself would have no amendment anyway, because this is a recommendation anyway.
So that's why, we're not amending the article. I, I'm, I think we should all be together with asking the question. Asking questions is fine.
Yeah, ask questions.
This isn't, this isn't a fatal question. I'm okay with it, so.
But we're not amending it anyways.
That's why, so I'm gonna ask you, you just, let's just go back to your motion without an amendment.
I didn't put the amendment in.
If he asks it, no, you said, you asked it.
I just, no, I said, was it non-amended? And she said, yes, non-amended.
Could we do it next time? After he finds out the answer?
If we had to, if we had to. We can reopen the warrant, we can always reopen the warrant.
No, no, he's gonna find out the answer, let him find out the answer, there's no harm.
Let's get something passed here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we get, you're right.
Second, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed, so.
Ms. Musto, you were in favor.
Are you, are you voting?
I want to find out the answer before we vote on it, so I'm gonna be opposed.
Okay.
Yeah, until we get the answer.
Three to two.
The article is in the warrant, I'll follow up once I get an answer in terms of the recommendation language.
If you come back and you think I'm more than happy to put it back on the office.
Then I'm fine, I just want the answer.
It can be a green sheet.
Okay, item number, go ahead, kill me. Amendments, I'm afraid to go to this one. Amendments of the school building committee established by the February 2019 special town meeting, and Mr. Milano, let you paint this picture.
Chair, so as we were just speaking about the school building committee, that as it currently exists would not meet the MSBA's regulations. The school committee has, has reviewed and approved this warrant article, which would add six non-voting positions to the school building committee to round out the school building committee from what is required to meet its regulations. So that's the superintendent schools, it's my position, it's the director of consolidated facilities, it's an individual that's certified for MCPPO, which is a procurement certification, which the assistant town administrator and the assistant superintendent, Katie Blake, have. The MSBA requires that the Cunningham School principal is on this school building committee, and there is also a slot for a local budget official, which would be a staff position under the way that this is envisioned from how I'm reading it. Each of those positions, they recommend the non-voting positions that they serve on and participate in the school building committee, but they not actually have a cast votes, just let the votes be the Milton residents who are serving on the school building committee.
So do you think the articles should at least, whether it's in the notes or in the, at least kind of clarify who's voting and who's non-voting?
It could include, yeah, so it could say five warrant, five members appointed by the town moderator voting, two members appointed by the school bill, school committee voting, two members appointed by the select board voting. I think that could be.
And then the others, and the others non-voting.
Correct.
Because this is an amendment to an existing.
Yes, yes.
So if you looked at it, if you looked at the whole thing, what was amended?
It is required.
Yeah.
And the other, the original doesn't say anything about voting.
Can we live with that? Can we live with that suggestion?
Yeah, I can, in this case, we are controlling the articles, so.
Second point, who's staffing this?
Right now, right now, it's mostly Sean that does the work.
Who, I'm sorry?
Staff it, someone has to staff it, though. Get this one?
He's not being paid.
The schools can staff it.
No, that's what I mean. So it's not, so this isn't staffed? Is your committee staffed by an employee?
No.
Wow.
Couple of school committee members, and then Sean does a lot of the agenda prep and minutes and all that. Or the OPM, I'm sorry, the owner's project manager manages minutes.
Similar to the fire station building committee, okay, same, it's very similar. Okay, I got it, okay. So someone paid is staffing it, it's just not a town employee, it's.
Until, yeah, but once we're in, once we're rolling with MSBA, they won't have a lot of meetings over the next year, and they won't really meet until an OPM is onboard, so.
So, Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to approve the?
We're done talking, go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the article, little i, little i, lowercase, lowercase two, I guess, amendment to the school building committee established by the February 19th, 2019 special town meeting, as with amendment suggested by the chair to identify current voting numbers.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Were you unanimous, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Wow.
Okay, number, item number three, home rule petition was established, a senior means tested property tax exemption. Mr. Milano, we already know about this, but go ahead, quick.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're gonna be done by nine.
So this is the one we've talked about a few times, that would result in a local tax exemption for seniors in Milton who meet the criteria, the main, the main criteria we're tracking is the state income circuit breaker for senior citizens, which, so essentially, if you get an income tax credit as a senior and you prove it locally, then you would be eligible for a local match accordingly. One thing that has been discussed, one item of discussion has been what should the match be? Communities have ranges of matches between 100% match of the state credit or a smaller portion. The match is, in this language, set to be between 50% of the state credit.
You're sure?
Up to 100% of the state credit, but it would be set by the select board at a later date. So it gives the select board the authority to set a match anywhere between 50 and 100% of the amount of the circuit breaker income tax credit, but it's not, does not need to be set at this point. And one thing I will note is that in the tax bill that was approved by the legislature last year, they doubled, they didn't quite double, but they significantly increased this tax credit, so what had been about a $1,700 max tax credit is now, I think, close to $2,700.
That's correct.
So it's a nice bump, and some of the communities that had higher matches are now evaluating where they want their match to be since the tax credit went up, so it's something that we can square away if this is approved by town meeting and approved by the legislature as well.
So we would approve this at town meeting, not with a percentage?
Correct.
That occurs with the legislature? It's a home rule petition, right?
Yep. So in order for it to be effective for fiscal year '26 tax bills, it would need to probably be approved by the legislature by May-June timeframe, which might be tricky just with the new session and everything, but.
But we know a guy.
And the good thing is, we're copying and pasting.
Kill me.
A home rule petition that has been done numerous times before, however.
Home rules go through informal, they can, they go through.
But I just don't want, it's no guarantee that it would be in effect for fiscal '26, and we would have to then advertise the program right away. Applications would have to be due by the end of August timeframe for us to be able to operate it for fiscal '26.
So this board, or you, who would determine the percentage after the law is passed?
This select board.
Okay. There a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Article little I, three, for inclusion in the special town meeting warrant dated February 24, 2025. Home rule petition to establish a senior means tested property tax exemption.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Musto. Conversation, discussion. Comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're good. Unanimous. Okay. Item number four, I dash V five zoning by law amendment regarding the new state accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The planning board met last night. We do not have draft language at this time.
Should we defer this until the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we will need to. I'll just note that the state regulations around ADUs, I distributed some information to this board, and we've shared some information with the planning board as well. Really sets the parameters of what local entities can regulate further for accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units will be permitted as a right in Milton starting February 2nd or February 6th. And there are really no other parameters on them until and unless Milton amends its bylaws to establish some parameters on them. The kind of bottom line of what the state is saying is regulate ADUs just as you would regulate a single-family home. Don't go, don't go beyond that. Don't, don't try to go beyond that.
Weren't they, are they trying to kind of go outside of that? Or more, be less restrictive than what we do in singles?
They're setting the maximum restriction as don't be more restrictive than a single family, but they are also setting guidelines and parameters within that that might further restrict what cities and towns can do in terms of regulating these. The state's goal is to have a lot of ADUs developed. So that is where they're starting out from.
Can I ask you just a weird question on this?
Absolutely.
So when this passes, February, what did you say, 5th or 6th or whatever? And until we do our, I mean, if the planning board gets this to us and it goes through on the 25th, it can be a free-for-all for that 20 days?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Do we expect that many applications in the first 20 days?
They're not cheap to build, so.
The cost is.
Pre-made.
So it's.
Some of those pre-made ones are gorgeous.
Pre-made ADUs?
Yeah, you like little apartments, just, and then just do a little connection.
The other thing to keep in mind is the, the single-family zoning in Milton is restrictive now. So like the lot size, the.
The setbacks and the setbacks.
Right, the setbacks, all that stuff.
There is some restrictions that are somewhat in place.
So that would still be in place?
For the most part.
For the most part, okay.
So long as your ADU fit in the current.
Can I ask a quick question to Mr. Chair? Do we know, so if this passes, has any community or have we done any projection on taxes? Like, I'm assuming that this would result in a tax increase because you'd have more taxpayers?
No, tax decrease.
Or tax decrease for, well, I mean, tax increase for the town in terms of revenue, tax potential decrease, and also ADUs tend to not have, not, they tend to not have children. So they tend to not be, in terms of demands.
We've been talking about it. The assessor and I were chatting about it. It's, it'll be interesting to see kind of how that plays out because if you take a four-bedroom colonial, that's 2,000 square feet. And now it's a two-bedroom colonial, that's 1,200 square foot. And now it has an accessory dwelling units, that 800 square feet and two bedrooms, like.
It's the same.
That, that main house may be less valuable, but the new unit would be new growth because it's a new unit and newly arriving on the tax bill. So that'll feed into new growth.
Interesting.
So it's a question of how many are there truly. A detached ADU would be just straight new value that the town sees because that would be, not take away from an existing structure.
Yep.
Land value might have to increase because land that can be developed to have a primary residence and accessory dwelling unit might be more, of more value. But that, that would raise values, not so much generate new growth.
Does it require the assessors to be involved for us to get the, to identify the amount and get the money?
So they, they get alerts through our systems with building permits. So they track the building permits, and then they'll go out and look at work. Right. So if there's a house sale, they'll send you a letter and say, hey, can we come see your house? And generally, people will say no. And we'll just look on railtor.com, see if you got a new kitchen and adjust your value. So they do that homework because they get notifications internally and they track land transactions. It is a potential growth source of, potential new growth.
That's great.
Motion?
I'll make, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ms. Bradley, please.
Ms. Bradley, go ahead.
Oh, insisting, okay. I gotta put my glasses on.
There shouldn't be a motion.
No, yeah, there's no, yeah.
They don't have anything.
Oh, right.
Oh, all right, all right. See, you were talking so positive. I'm like, this, I did it. Let's go, there we go. I apologize. Why are we talking?
He looked at me and said, motion. So I was ready to go.
Okay.
Five, the zoning bylaws?
Five, yes, zoning bylaws. Site plan review. Not ready?
This is in a more final shape, but I don't have a final version from the planning board.
How about the next one, zoning map?
Zoning map we do have. So this is more of a procedural housekeeping item. There's been some court cases that say that if you have overlay zoning districts in your town that you've approved as part of your zoning bylaws, but you didn't amend the zoning map to incorporate them, then those overlays don't exist until you amend your zoning map. So this zoning article just takes the Brook Road overlay district, which treats a single, really two properties, the old, I think it was the Knights of Columbus, maybe, once upon a time. So that overlay, if anybody remembers that. And then the Milton Village.
Oh, yeah.
Plan, Milton Village overlay.
Development.
Whatever, yeah. So those two, we're not changing, we're not creating anything new. All we're doing is saying those two overlays approved by the town previously are now included as part of our zoning map. And that's final.
And do we want a motion on this?
It's planning board?
Yep, submitted these.
Will we vote this tonight?
Yep.
Motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Bradley, second?
Second.
Mr. Zoll, all those in favor?
I need to make a motion.
You did. I just got it for you.
The zoning bylaw amendment regarding the zoning map, Article little, item six.
Got it. Second?
Nope, yes.
Mr. Zoll, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Motion to close the, other potential artists will have a lighting article at the next meeting. Correct?
Correct.
Council now.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Musto, all those in favor?
Aye.
Done. Item number six, discussion approval. Appointment to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, MWR advisory board, representative for the town of Milton, Marina Fernandez, our new director of public works. Do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marina Fernandez, Director of Public Works to the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, the MWRA advisory board, as the representative for Milton.
I'll second.
And I'm so proud to do that as a woman.
May second with the $10,000 salary? She'll be laughing watching this at home. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number seven, discussion update. East Milton deck ballards and planters. I asked this to be put on the agenda. This is something that Mr. Malano and I have been talking about, especially in light of what happened in New Orleans. Everyone knows, I, my background is extensive in public safety. But when the East Milton deck was built, the new deck, there were these, what are they called? Ballards that are there, that are truly decked. As a matter of fact, I counted tonight, two are down, two are up there. They're not true ballard. A ballad is intended to stop a vehicle. They're usually three to four feet above the ground, three to four feet in the ground. The fact that the deck is built with a membrane, there was no ability for the contractor, even though they didn't tell us, to put true ballards in there. So we've been talking, Nick and I have been talking, we've, we've been, what's been submitted to us are a series of cement planters that are used regularly, that would be on either end of the deck. And while they're fully concrete, the top of them look like they're a flower bed. They're, they're aesthetically pleasing. They use quite a bit, particularly around major infrastructure places of thrust. I don't think we should be having any more events where we're having 1,000 people on the deck, where even whether or not, even if it wasn't intentional, where someone mistakenly just drove through that and wiped out, you know, a series of individuals and.
This would be where the Adams Road.
Both, yeah. Both, both at Adams, granted. And we have money. There is a, there's a line out of 100,000 remaining that was put there initially towards the pergola we were going to, there were $500,000 short of. We could use, I've checked, we could use some of that money to do this. So you can go on and.
No, I'll just add that Nick Connors, Marina Fernandez, the deputy alba, were down at the deck yesterday, mapping out, trying to figure out exactly how many would be needed and locations. So, and Nick then will work on some pricing. The issue for us would be more so getting, being able to move them for DPW trucks to get in to do prep for events, the cranes. So there's versions that have slots for forklifts.
Yeah.
To pick them up and move them. So it would mean, you know, another, some equipment would need to go down ahead of time when they're setting up for, you know, the tree or whatever. So it'll mean a slight change in, in our operations just to get trucks in and out of there for maintenance. But otherwise, it, we're working on locations and amounts, and then we'll get some pricing. They're not hugely expensive, a few, a couple thousand each maybe. So we should be able to get enough that is safe.
Especially the attractiveness and especially if you look at the aftermath of the New Orleans incident. It was just so easy to perpetrate. It was just so, you know, anything from the most recent, the menorah lighting, to, you know, the Christmas tree lighting to.
The Eve lights and.
All that, and the.
The Chamber of Commerce event.
Yep, Chamber, the Muslim, the Muslim holidays are coming, you know, very soon, and that gets a big. So I just think, I think you'd be shocked if someone sent me a series, and I want to thank the East Milton residents who's in the security business, who sent me a series of photos, and I went and kind of, be shocked how many places in the city already have them that we don't even realize that that's the security purposes. So I want to put it because I want to get this moving. I really don't want to prove any more large-scale events there until we get this done first. I think we need to do this to protect the residents. So thanks for getting this on the agenda.
I like the idea of planters to it.
Yeah, the planters will be more aesthetically pleasing, yeah. Okay, item number eight, discussion approval. No Place for Hate document proclamation to be read on Monday, January 20, 2025 in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s. And that will be, is it Clark Baptist again? Am I correct? You don't know?
I don't off the top of my head.
That's what usually is. Is that, Lynn, is that already drawn? So I just need a motion to approve it? So could I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the No Place for Hate proclamation to be read on Monday, January 20, 2025 in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Motion by Ms. Bradley. Second by Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Number nine, we're getting there at 8:50. Were you an eye on that? Were you an eye?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion approval, meeting minutes, December 17, 2024, and December 23, 2024. We met on December 23? Oh, yeah, we did, okay.
We split these because Aaron wasn't, you weren't at the 23rd one, right?
That was the vote, that was the menorah, correct? Is that the menorah vote?
Yeah.
So let's move first.
Zoom one that we did.
I was not there, no.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 17, 2024.
Second? Second, Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain, abstain, Ms. Bradley.
No, we just go.
Oh, no, Ms. Bradley, yeah. My bad, my bad.
Next one.
Go, next one.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes dated December 23, 2024.
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Musto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Malano, town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just kind of recapping, we had, obviously, we were open for business through the holidays, but some skeleton crews in our town department. So thanks for everybody's, you know, the phones weren't burning up either, so we appreciate. Everybody had a quiet holiday season, and I was able to go down to the menorah lighting. I know Ms. Musto was there as well, so it was, it was great to see Rabbi Benjamin. He led us in a secular celebration of the holiday, and he made a very clear point that it was such. And there was some singing involved. And that was great. So just an update, if you put your, if you had a trash collection and you put your Christmas tree out or holiday tree out Monday or Tuesday, Sunrise did not collect them, as you probably noticed.
I didn't.
They had no truck in town for said tree collection. So they were called today. We expect a truck tomorrow, so leave it out. It's a week-long collection, so they'll be in town tomorrow. And then if there are stragglers after the fact, call down to DPW and we will help you out. Just a heads, I know folks are probably aware of this, but MBTA communities, Supreme Judicial Court decision has yet to come down. The SJC posts a notice every morning at 8:00 if, if a decision is going to come out that day. So you can follow along if you like, but not yet. So I've started to get a couple of questions if decisions come out, so I just wanted to flag that. Building Commissioner Joe Hsu's last day in Milton was Friday. He took a position in the town of Milis, which was drastically closer to home. He lives in Rhode Island. So while we are sad to see him go, we understand the quality of life with a 20-minute commute versus an hour and a half commute. So the department is, will be posting that building commissioner position. The town engineer position is posted if folks are interested in a local town engineer position. And then obviously, Director of Planning and Community Development, Cheyenne continues to do a good job leading that department in Tim's absence, but that position is posted if folks are interested. The East Milton Fire Station is out to bid. Bids are due, I think it's January 20th, so we should have.
The new East Milton Fire Station. The new East Milton Fire Station.
For construction of a new East Milton Fire Station. Out to bid, bids are due January 20th. So we'll be able to report to the board most likely at our next meeting as the results of that bid probably won't award a contract, but expect to see some action on that front. We did close the East Milton, existing East Milton Fire Station request for expressions of interest process. Got some feedback. We're, we're working on a summary for the select board and some suggested next steps on that. Going back to a couple of developers with a couple of follow-up questions about that, and we'll circle back. I just want to note that 936 Preschel Road, 40B project has started clearing that site. So the Ice House, if people haven't driven by it lately, is they got to sign up.
Sale, yeah.
Starting to market their units.
It's good.
Yep, that's pretty good. 711 Randolph Ave is well underway. 440 Granite, which is not a 40B, but a project is well underway over in East Milton.
There's some units though. They have three units, few units, there's a couple.
And then.
Is there commercial going in at the, who he'll have?
At the Ice House.
At the Ice House, yeah, that's what I meant.
Yes. There's a commercial space. I have not heard yet.
Does not have a.
Nobody's.
No, it's not.
But these projects coming in, East Milton 40B, we know, we expect, they submitted building permit information. They're hoping to start demolition in February. And then 728 Randolph Ave, which recently changed hands as well, we expect to commence permitting. So these projects are, are coming slowly but surely. And that was really it for me, Mr. Chair.
Do you know any nail salons? We think we could use some oil in Milton. Well, I know I shouldn't say that. I'm only repeating what's been said to me so many times in the past two weeks. I apologize. Not to say they're not important. My wife and daughters will be yelling at me.
My father goes every couple of weeks.
Did he get a pedicure?
He's got a pedicure.
Pedicure. Yeah, pedicures. I'm thinking of doing that.
He loves it.
All right, all right, all right. Let's get back on topic. I have no, I have no report. Public comment response, we do not have any. Future meeting date?
Although, Mr. Chair, sorry, we should all congratulate you on your swearing.
Don't worry about it.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very humbling, very surreal. And I do want to, it's funny, MBTA a lot, all today, it's all like, it's all, it's all, I can't, it's like, all today, people asking me about it, but just. And again, I do want to thank, I know I mentioned earlier, I really want to thank, and I know I just got there, but Matt Donovan from MSP, like the people at MSP, the site team that came out, everyone, Treasure Goldberg's office, that, it was a, it was a 50-50 shot. Either get in or you didn't get in, and we were, when many people thought we wouldn't. And I thank everyone who commented and worked on that. I really, I cooled my colleague Bill Driscoll, who did a lot behind the scenes that no one even knew about, so. That's it. Future, future dates, so Tuesday, January 21st and/or Tuesday, January 28th.
And/or?
Does it say and/or? It does say and/or. Why does that say and/or?
I'm going to be in China on the 21st, so I'd prefer to the 28th.
Oh, that's why, so that's, okay, so I get that.
The 28th would be the normal, the normal day.
Yeah, because we're off.
We're usually second and fourth.
Because we're second and fourth, so let's.
It was just with everything going on, I didn't know if the board wanted.
Is that enough time? Because we have a few outstanding articles for the warrant that have not been approved for us to put on the warrant. If we go on the 28th, is that too late?